Okay, we're having a budget workshop to review and prepare the fiscal 24 operating budget here with the transfer station superintendent, Robin Hamm. Robin, you've had a chance to consider changes that you'd like to make for your budget for the coming year, so why don't you walk us through what you have?
Well, the department head, I took what, the 5% of that, and the labor was the same thing. I did the same thing for all four people that I have on site. The employee benefits, Kelly said she was gonna do all that, because I don't know anything about that. General supplies, I did go up $1,000 on that, because I want to do, want to paint the floor, I want to do some painting and stuff. Heating bill, I went up a little bit, $500.
And I don't know about others, but I feel like I've got to be looking at this request, but also looking at current trending. Is that right?
Well, the current trending is just what he's spent as of today. I mean, unless we come across a line, so if we're looking at the initial worksheet, unless it's a big jump, we can stop and peek at the other line.
Are you gonna point that out? Is somebody?
Yes.
You're gonna point that out as we go along?
Sure.
Okay, great.
The employee, I can go right down to 5041. For employees' training, I don't know anything about that. It's been $1,000, so I dropped that 500, because I haven't heard of anything coming down the line of training.
So I can add to that. Every year, there is one transfer station annual summit that they do statewide, main municipal host. It's in April, so we should be seeing something soon. As far as I know, that's the only training the previous superintendents have done. It's usually a two-day, it's quite informative, I understand, of solid waste. Yep, up in Bethel, Bangor, somewhere up there.
So...
I know that we had had some talk about different training that they should do every year, too. I mean, all the whole, would that come out of their budget, or does that come out of?
Well, I guess it depends on what kind of training. Is it something free that the last training that we did, that we can get?
Was that free?
That was free, yeah.
Okay, you know, something like that. I just meant, you know...
I mean, usually our yearly, you know, the fireworks and water training, that, you know, things we need in-house are free.
All right.
So, he's cut that from 1,000 to 500. Does that make sense, given that training program for two days for, how many people? Four?
Usually it's only the superintendent in the past.
Oh, I thought, oh, I thought it was more than that. Okay, all right, so...
That would pay for the two-day class and a hotel, 500, if that's, if you don't have any...
That doesn't pay for the travel time or anything like that, though.
I mean, it should be close. 500, you don't think that's...
We don't pull that out of another line, do we?
No, we, no, he doesn't have a mileage line, does he, Kelly?
Yes.
Oh, he does have a mileage line.
5094 down the bottom, mileage and tolls.
Do we know what we spent last year?
So 500 are there, so, yeah.
Don't tell him, Kelly.
You know what we spent last year on this? I don't want to spend too much time, it's not a big line, but, you know, we ought to make sure we get it right.
Talking about the training?
Yeah.
Zero. We still have $1,000 left.
That's year-to-date. He's asking what we spent on last year's budget.
Last year's?
Last year, yeah.
You don't have any last year's numbers, do you?
No, I don't have last year's numbers. We'll get it for you, but it's minimal.
Okay, let's leave it there for now. Kelly, if you find that we spent something different or more than the 500, just let us know, okay?
License and permits. Yeah, licensing, I left that at the same, because I don't know for sure what's coming down the line for licensing, so I left that the same. It's been that way for a number of years now, I believe. The compactor, I left at 5,000, because you could never know when a motor's gonna go.
So this is repair?
Yes.
That's what this line is?
Yes.
Okay.
Pine tree, that is...
When was the last time that was serviced?
This spring, we had a hose let go, and a guy came up and greased it and did all, everything while he was there.
Does he take a look more generally at everything to make sure that there aren't any other issues?
That I'm not aware, I'm not sure of. But I think, I think he does, but I wasn't there over his shoulder looking, but I think he does.
I don't know anything about these, but is there some preventive maintenance that ought to be done on these to maybe avoid some, you know, critical failure?
Yeah.
And it looks like we...
There is?
Yeah, I don't know if there is or not.
I think we ought to find out. If there's a need, you know, on any equipment, we ought to make sure we're maintaining it properly, because if you just let it go and it breaks, it's probably gonna cost you more than if you properly maintain it. So would you look into that, please?
Okay.
We've spent four of the 5,000 of that line already this year, so it's gotta be going to something.
Yeah, but my point is, if they got a hose and they just fix the hose, if they aren't...
No, he did, he knew, he went down and looked underneath, but I don't know exactly what he did.
I believe our previous superintendent had it all gone through there, when he did the skid steer at the same time.
Okay.
We'll look into it, Tom, see if there's sort of annual maintenance.
All right.
And pine tree, the solid waste of people, I did raise that.
Oh, pine tree, yeah.
Because I don't know what it's gonna be.
So, so far, you've spent 20, you still have 24,000. What do we, what's the increase based on? Does you speak to them, or?
I made a phone call, but it never got back to me.
You know, when I looked into this, we, we don't seem to be maintaining records of exactly what we're paying for the various types of disposals that we're doing. And I think we need to maintain records on a going-forward basis.
Right.
I've got a schedule here, and I'd like you to take a look at this. And for each of the vendors, if you could maintain that for us, please, it will, it will just keep track of exactly what we're paying, when, what the tonnage is, or however it is, is being priced out.
Okay.
So if you could, and it doesn't need to be done on a computer, you could just pencil it in.
Okay.
As long as it's legible.
Yeah.
And you should turn those into the treasurer.
Now, on this, on this one here, I went 5% over, but I did it wrong. Kelly?
I was gonna say, that looks more than 5%.
Yeah. I did it wrong, so...
Now, pine tree is solid waste?
Hey, the people that picks up, yes, that's, Toronto takes it to Pine State or Pine Tree, and they do what they need to do with it there.
So this is the, is this the bulk, or is this the compact?
That's, this is the trash compactor, correct.
So, pine tree is probably the one we should have called there to get the amount, tonnage.
Because they'd know what they're...
All right, so, Robin, am I understanding you that this number, you're only looking for a 5% increase from 74.9?
Correct.
So, this $15,000 increase, you want us to lower?
Yes.
Okay.
I had told Robin that I would fix the numbers after the meeting. He, I didn't know about it until a few minutes before we came in.
Right, and I forgot to...
All right, so this one's gonna be only a 5% increase.
What was the increase last year? Do we know what the rate increased last year?
I, I don't.
I don't know either. We can look into it, though.
Well, if, if the, I don't know, I assume there was a rate increase last year?
That I don't know. I took over in May.
I didn't believe there was any, I don't believe last year there was any increase on the solid waste. I think the only one that we, excuse me, that we increased was the demo line.
Okay.
I think so, too.
So Kelly's gonna point off a quick, how the books ended as of June 30th of the prior year, so that you can see how much was actually spent, not just what was requested, but how we ended the last year. I think that's kind of vital to these lines.
So you're gonna get in touch with Pine Tree and find out if they're expecting any price increase?
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
Now, they should be able to give you a tonnage to date. They should be able to give you a layout of every month.
Yeah, they did, when, yes. When I did a report for DEP, they, they gave me a list of things.
Good.
Do they actually process that?
I have no idea when it leaves our facility. I have no idea what happens to it.
Because a lot of times, they'll have a contract with someone else. They'll do certain things with handling, and they'll pass that material off to somebody else. And if they got a contract and the price is locked in, then we should understand that and make sure that they aren't just passing increases off on us.
No.
Do you follow me there, Robin?
Yeah, yeah. Now, I, I might, so this is, I'm all new at this, so you're gonna have to bear with me. I think Pine Street is Toronto. They're the one that hauls it.
Toronto, dude.
Toronto, right.
I contacted them, and I did get ahold of that one. And they didn't indicate that they, they were not expecting an increase in the coming year.
Right.
For hauling.
I did, I did speak to Toronto, and that's the same thing that I, I found out Friday.
I would, I would imagine there was an increase sometime last year because of the spike in energy pricing?
We're actually on a three-year contract with them that's good through October of 2024.
Fixed, for three years?
October 2023, I'm sorry.
So, so there was no increase last year? Okay.
And, and the guy I talked to said, if you don't ask, they won't increase it.
Yeah, that's pretty much where that goes, okay, all right.
They do, Tom, they are working on it for the next three years.
Okay, good.
Okay, going down to electricity, I went up $100 on that, not knowing, you know, just...
The treasurer came up with a formula. Since our last meeting, she has come up with a formula based on CMP increases, so we'll have her adjust that according to the formula. They essentially recommended $35 per 500, per how many, 500 kilometers that were used per month. There's a formula that we got, but she adjusted all the municipal members, so we'll adjust it accordingly.
It should have been 30, it should be 30%.
Well, it was different for commercial accounts.
But 30% on commercial right now. I believe that was a school, and everybody else has gone up.
Right.
Is that correct, Dennis? Do you remember that? Wasn't there a 30% increase in the school?
They have a three-year contract, and they've taken 14%.
Yeah, I know. But I, I know they'd gotten a letter sent to them that there was gonna be a large increase.
Did they do that solar deal?
Yeah.
They did, okay.
Hasn't started yet.
But they did, but that will be in effect next year? Yeah, okay.
What do we, so, your electricity, you've gone up $100 right now.
Yeah, it was 29.
29. You're, you're unexpended, you've got 393 left on that line right now. That doesn't sound like enough.
No, it's definitely not enough. Did you have the expense summary? Do we have, did anybody?
I got it back from 217.
Okay. Yeah, so it does look like he's right. You've spent all but 393.
I passed this in before this.
Yeah, okay. So we'll adjust that line and get back to an updated number.
All right.
So what's next? You guys decide to keep going, Robin?
Yeah. Telephone, I kept it at the same.
I was gonna say, that, that's a contracted amount through VCN, so if, if, that's not gonna change for the next two years, so. Looks like you've got a little wiggle room there, but...
Building, repair, maintenance, I went up $150. I went from 2750 to 29.
On what basis?
On, you know, I want the electrician to come up and put a hot water heater in. I want to put a couple more outlets in, because there's never been hot water in that place, and I think there should be some hot water in it. I do have a tank that was thrown away, and he said it was good, so I hooked it up, and I run water through it, but I just don't know if it heats up yet or not.
There is $1,800 left in that account, with just a few months left in the fiscal year. I don't know what kind of expense is, but I don't know what that would cost. Maybe get a quote from the electrician?
Yeah.
You might be able to do it out of this year's budget, if you have no other issues.
If they have the money, sure.
Right.
Yeah, might as well use it.
Better be increasing it, we might as well, you know, spend that down.
Mm-hmm.
Let's call the electrician, Robin, next week.
Okay.
Give you thanks.
Equipment repair, I went up $100, because, 41. Because, uh, we spent 19 at 2017.
So, yeah, that one, as of today, you've only spent $350, so you have almost 1,500 left out of that account.
I was gonna rip them, but, nah.
Right, but I, I want to do the, you see what I'm saying, I can't, I can't, go ahead. The repair on, I want to have somebody come up and take a look at the skid steer. I don't know if that, we shipped that out, or...
What's the matter with that?
There's nothing wrong with it. Just, like he said, preventive maintenance. I don't know when the last time that was done.
The last superintendent had a individual from, it's not Norrington, it's Norrington anyway, and they come right up, and they do it right on site.
You know, it, it's important to keep, and, and I know it's, it was pressed before your time, but we ought to have maintenance records. You ought to have files down there, so when maintenance does, we got copy of the invoice, exactly knowing what was done.
Yeah.
And, and we ought to have a schedule for all of that equipment, to know that we need to do it every 18 months, or whatever, and make sure we're religiously doing that.
Yeah, that does have an hour meeting on it.
Typically, equipment meeting.
It's hourly, right.
Okay.
And that's another one, you know, and not to repeat it, but you've got, you've only spent 19% of that account, so if we can call them, find out when it was done last and what it's gonna cost, you might also be able to sneak that in this year.
That was just done, so there are records.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and talking about that, I had Jennifer order me a copy, so all the bills and stuff that I get, I'm keeping copies at the transfer station also.
Okay.
When I sign them off, I, I make a copy of them, put it in there, so we have a copy here, and also a copy up there.
I think that's correct.
As of, I don't know when we bought that.
And Robin, you can, any vendors, like, you can come in and see the treasurer and say, I'd like to see, she can type the vendor, John Deere, Northeast, whatever it's called, into our software, and it will pull up all the payees to Northeast. So that is gonna reference the date of the AP warrant, and the amount of the invoice, so we can easily pull them out of the file. You've just gotta give her the vendor name.
The only problem with that is, is the invoices, they're filed with the, with the warrant.
Right, but the date is on there. I mean, I know it's not ideal, but at least the date is there.
So, Robin, I encourage you to keep your own files.
Yeah.
So you can...
Yeah, I, I've been doing that since we got the computer, and so, I just gotta get some rack for the filing cabinet that somebody brought in and gonna throw away, so I confiscated it.
All right, what do we have here, Kelly?
This is the year-end 630 of last year, so we can look at that line.
Okay, and again, we go halfway in here, and we'll see it.
Yeah, it's on page four, Tom.
Page four, okay.
So what are we looking for here? We kinda jumped around a little bit.
I think we paused. I think we're on solid waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on solid waste right now, but we was talking about Pine Tree that brought the...
I think you gotta get information from Pine Tree to, to do that, to properly figure out what that budget ought to be.
Yeah, you should be able, you know, if you get ahold of them, you should be able to email us what we're using monthly, because obviously summertime will be a lot more than our time.
Right, correct.
And get an average of what we're spending, doing tonnage-wise.
So it's 61.
And, and also on the, on our demo, we should be doing that, too, because I know the demo, last year we went up on, and what do we got in our demo right now? I don't want to jump ahead here, but we're running out of time here. So, I'd say we got $16,000 left right now in our demo. So...
Yeah, the solid waste is this Toronto. He carries that.
I understand. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, we know Triano, they do the haul, and Pine Tree...
Pine Tree separates it and does whatever they have to do to it.
So, we, we got a three, we got a contract with Triano. The Pine Tree, we just gotta make sure that we've budgeted enough, that we're staying within, within budget here, tonnage-wise. That's why we need those numbers on tonnage.
Yeah, I will, I will call them first thing Monday.
I, I got a suggestion here. I, I think you ought to meet with Kelly, and it should only take about an hour. But Kelly, you can go through each of these lines, understand what the nature of the line is, create a plan with him as to what he needs to do in order to develop a budget for each of these lines. And then, Robin, you can do that, and just go back and verify these numbers. But to, to, you know, to take a line and grow it by 5%, for me, doesn't work. I need a basis for that. You'd understand, you know, what the prior year trends have been, what, what we believe the inflation place, inflation factor...
The 5% was supposed to be for employees.
Well, yeah, the 5% was for employees.
You know, some of these things may be flat, and maybe you're gonna have more, and we need to understand exactly why we're changing these budgets. And they probably need to be changed, but we just can't pick a number out of the air and throw it on the budget. We gotta, we gotta do some homework on this. So could you lay out for him for each of these lines? Because they're all different, how you approach that.
Right.
You know, how to do that. So then, Robin, you can go about doing that work.
Okay.
And, and resubmit that budget.
We're gonna be meeting next week anyways, right?
Yeah, yeah. Let's talk a little bit, if you could do that, but let's, while we're here, let's talk about capital. We only got about 10 minutes left.
Yeah.
So, so if you two could do that, and, and just get him going in the right direction, Kelly.
Yeah.
So let's talk about capital. You've got a number of projects down there that you have in mind?
Yeah. Now, the, the, the big one is a ramp that comes from the metal container down over into the driveway.
Yeah.
So we don't have people, you know, as a safety hazard.
Yeah.
And the other thing is a new entrance.
Yeah.
There's a capital improvement. And I would like to get three 40-foot overseas containers and put a roof between the two of them, so we have some cold storage, then get rid of some of them rickety ones up there that's there now.
So this is where we're gonna bring in Sabeo?
Yeah, Sabeo, and what I'd like to have you do is, all, we've actually asked Jen to do it for you, is to call Sabeo and get an idea of what the engineering proposal's gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
Do, do all the, uh...
Right.
Do all that up. So, what, what I've suggested to the board is to, each department, if they got projects like that, to put forward money, so they have their own engineering money. So we don't just pull it out one big clump. So, what, what you're gonna need to do is, when she gets you that number, you're gonna add that in on an engineering line.
Okay.
Okay, that way there, when we have Sabeo come up, we have money to pay them to do the actual engineering.
So this is not design. This is to provide, as I see it, a preliminary estimate of what the project would cost.
Right.
Just a ballpark, so that we can understand what each of these projects might cost.
Mm-hmm.
And what the design of those might cost, and that's...
No, you need the money for the design, because he's gonna have to have pay, be able to pay to get that part done. We won't know an estimate on the project till the design's done.
Well, typically, for relatively short money, you can get a preliminary, a very sketch, not even a sketch, you can get something from the engineer, giving you an indication, is this a $50,000 project, a $5,000 project, or $100,000?
But you do that, you do that. But this money here, I guess you, well, what you're talking about is actually getting a price on the whole job right front.
Well, I, I'd like to know, I, I think it's important for us to know generally what each of these things are gonna cost. And before we spend money on designing anything, that we try to prioritize these. How important are they? You know, that one's gonna be too expensive, let's put that off for a year, or maybe that's the most expensive one, and let's not do the other three we have in mind. I'm just saying that we may be able to, I think, direct this, so that if we're gonna engage the engineer, we're reasonably comfortable with the scope and size of the project as something we think we can support.
They can do that, but I think what we've gotta do first, though, is we gotta put money, have them put money forward to pay for a design. He can also get that price, right? He gets that price, and he can at town meeting or whatever, and say, okay, the engineer's according to this price, out of $250,000, dah 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 dah, you know, before the design happens. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, but you have to have money for the design itself.
I, I understand.
So you just put money for the design, have them give you a, you know, because you're gonna walk around with them, tell them what you want.
Right.
And then they're gonna turn around and say, okay, this is probably gonna be a $250,000, I'm just throwing numbers, it probably won't be, but we don't want a budget for that until the design is done, we've okayed it, then we'll put it on the next warrant or special town meeting.
So this money that we would put aside for design, would this be to actually design the part?
Do the design.
What I'm saying is, I think there's a step that you can have before that.
Oh, no, you could do that, you could do that at the same time. You're right.
Yeah, that before you try to put a warrant forth and appropriate money, that we ought to have a sense of the project, and how much generally it's gonna cost. Because, because you got four of these things, is that right?
Right.
Four projects, you got the, the metal bin roadway, you got the entrance, you, you wanna buy some of those storage bins and put a roof over it.
Yeah.
So I guess that's three. But there was a fourth, though, wasn't there?
Ramp, ramp.
That's what, that was on the metal bin.
Well, I think that's all one project.
Yeah.
The entrance, the roadway, that's all one.
That's all, that would be all one project, as far as I'm concerned. But the, the entrance we have now is working fine, but...
Yeah, that's...
What we need to do is this, have them give us an estimate on what it's gonna cost for a design to do this project.
Right.
Okay? When they do that, they, they're gonna come up. We have to have money there to pay them to come up and do the preliminaries and all that. They should, they have to get, they ask them to give us an estimated cost of the project, so they can come back to us with an estimated cost before, we want to know how much it's gonna cost before we design it, right?
Let me wait and I'll see what, what that budget comes in at.
Yeah.
My only point is, if the design is a big number.
Yeah.
And then, I'm saying, before we go there, we gotta have a way of sizing this thing before we spend that money, to, and, and make sure this is something that we think is worthwhile.
Well, no, that's what we'll do at the same time. That's exactly what I'm explaining, oh, I'm trying to explain. We're not becoming all right, but...
Okay.
All right. I'll call Sabeo, and we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
So that's all the capital, like the, the ramp, the entrance, and the...
Containers.
Containers.
You should be able to take care of the container part yourself, correct?
Correct. I did last year. I got a quote, and we put a hold on it, because...
But you didn't last year have a quote to put a roof on it?
No, no, no. You're right. I just got the containers.
Yeah. So, one thing I'd like to have you do is make sure you go see your code officer and make sure that what you want to do is legit. I see people doing it, but I don't know if it's legit or not.
Right, right.
Okay, and what you're gonna have to do to make it legit.
Yeah.
And obviously, you're gonna have to get price on trusses.
Correct.
Somebody to put it together.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
So do that, and then, I guess we'll proceed on trying to get an idea of what engineering and cost-wise, and the other stuff's gonna be. So...
Can you read?
It'd be nice if we could have that for next week.
You know, timing-wise, this can be, this can be tough, getting this together. And I'd rather, you know, take our time and do it, right?
Right.
We can't make it for this, this year. Who knows? Maybe we'll have a special meeting in the fall, and we can bring it forward at that time.
If they could give you a verbal of roughly the cost of the project, and give us an idea of what the engineer's gonna cost, get the engineer started.
Yeah, yeah.
Get that all started.
Appropriate the engineering cost, maybe not the project cost.
No, no, I, I don't think the project cost, you don't want to do the project cost anyways until you, until all, everything's all set in stone, and then you bid it out. Because you don't want to do what we did with the town shed, put the cart before the horse, appropriate the money, not have enough money to do the project.
Also, for Tom's project, for Robin, about keeping track of the invoices, would it be okay if he comes in and uses one of the town hall computers, and I'll teach him how to use Excel?
Yeah, we haven't talked about that, anyway. Yeah, we haven't talked about that anyway.
But I haven't talked to Tom about it.
I, I gave him a, a template.
Right, but I wouldn't, I was just thinking it would be easier for tracking purposes if it was all in Excel and then we could-
I, I love it in a computer, but I'll take it any way I can get it. As long as it's legible. And I'll leave that to you, Robin, which your IT skills alike. If, if that's something you, you can do, terrific. If not, I'll take pencil.
What we'll do, we'll do both. We'll do paper and she can teach me so I have something to fall back on.
That's better, better.
Love it. All right?
I have no problem.
We'll combine, we'll combine the two. You do, you, you, you send it to me and-
Okay, good. All right. Anything else? Are we, we're at the appointed hour. Anything else you want to bring up?
No, just that's it. Everything's going good up there.
So why don't you go back and fine tune some of these?
Yes, yeah, I will.
Okay, and, um, this, this is a preliminary anyways, so, um, okay, thank you.
And I will get with Kelly and we'll, we'll definitely get that done.
Yep. Very good. Thank you, Robin. Gentlemen. Okay, um.
This is situated here.
Do we have here?
What page are we on? It's at the back.
Must be in the back here.
I thought it was.
Nine, page nine.
Page nine of this?
Of the initial worksheet. You gentlemen have a copy of what you turned in, the initial worksheet?
Yeah, six.
Yep.
Page six of this one here.
Oh, that sheet? No.
Oh, um.
Oh, which one do you want?
That's fine. Safety, did you say was page?
Page nine.
Page nine of that one, huh?
Page nine, okay.
Page six of the expense, but it's-
And, um.
Page five of the expense.
Okay. All right. You're up, gentlemen.
But they, you do or don't have what the board's going by. You were given these to fill out. Do you have these? Cause that's what they're going to do is go line by line. This is what you were given to fill in numbers with in the budget first pass?
Yeah, we, I don't have a copy of any of that.
But you turned, this is what you turned in now?
Yeah, we just added some numbers to one of them, uh, two lines I think I added numbers to.
So you don't have a copy of it?
I do not.
Okay. Um, well, what were you thinking we would do today?
I don't know. What do you want to do?
Do you want to go over some numbers? See what you guys asking for your budget?
I have mine. Just going to give you mine and I'll look on the, so. We're going to just go down through it. All right, these are the numbers you guys filled in?
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, those are existing numbers and I think-
Well, no, this is the current, that's the budget request.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's you.
Sorry.
Do you have any water here?
Just a bubble. Want me to go get your glass?
Okay, where you guys start salaries? Can we just?
Yeah, we just start right on the top. I think, I think I left that one the same, I believe.
The first group is, is plowing and sand, is that correct or am I?
Yep.
Okay. So, um.
I think we left it everything, I don't, I don't think we changed, uh.
I didn't change anything on that.
Help me out. The, the ten thousand for labor under plowing and sand, what is that for?
I've always just took in the late, that, I've always just considered that one labor of like ourselves, you know, because we're the only one technically.
We've only got two employees that get paid on the books and that's those two there. So that, that's where their salaries come out of.
These are the updated wages and equipment that they're looking for this year?
Okay, so, um.
Uh, I have a chicken spread.
Yeah, I think- The salary cost of the two laborers is on that line? I mean, for the two road agents is on that line?
Yeah, that, that is, that is the labor.
Ten thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just for winter time, correct?
Yeah, that's just, uh, when-
Okay.
And the rest of it's just like FICA and social security.
And the subcontracting is?
Uh, like-
Anybody that's hired by us and our trucks.
So i- i- is this budget in total intended to cover the, the winter plowing and sanding?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we were going to go up last year because we raised the rates, but we haven't really gone through a winner yet.
Is there a total in this or am I missing?
I'm confused.
That looks low.
I'm confused here because you've got ten thousand dollars, you didn't go up on it, right? But you're negative fifty-six hundred here. Well. And then, uh, if you go road maintenance, okay, um, as of right now, you've spent, right over here, I don't expect it, oh, you've only, you've only spent five dollars. This is five bucks, seven bucks, seven dollars. Am I, am I, am I missing something?
No, you're, so you're on, you're looking at the top of page five.
Well, I am, but what I did is I went from, I went to plowing and sand and showing a negative fifty-six, forty-four.
Yeah, they-
In my mind, I would, I would have to think that line would be increased.
So the current budget, what we're paying out of each week, what he's saying is that as of today is payroll.
Oh, as of today, yes.
You're already negative fifteen thousand. So if you've already overspent fifty-six hundred, why didn't you increase this line?
We didn't know we were that negative.
Okay. So are we getting?
Especially after this week, it'd probably be worse.
Do you get regular monthly reports on your, or do you have access to your budget to actual information?
Yeah, we get like printed out sheets.
They get these.
So, so.
I haven't had one in, I haven't asked for one in a little while.
Well, that's something you ought to look at regularly. If you're overdrawn, you ought to, I, I would think you would know that. And, uh, you ought to be aware of it. So i- is the ten thousand, is this for each time you go out, is this a salary fixed? I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
It's hourly.
Uh, we're hourly, so every time we-
You're hourly. So everything on this is based on the number of hours you put in?
Correct.
Like every week you have like a timesheet.
A timesheet, and that's where this comes out?
That comes out of, and that's why there's the reduction on the equipment.
So if we're over, if, if we're negative fifty-six hundred now and then we look at the year before, how do we close down the books?
That's where I was going to come from.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're over fifty-six now and in winter time, we're what, three quarters of the way through winter?
Yeah.
Okay. I would ask, you know, I, I'm just, just throwing numbers all there, but you're five thousand, six thousand, you're all, you're probably talking to be twelve thousand dollars over that budget line by the time the end of the year.
I was going to say, it's probably going to be twenty, twenty-five thousand, something in that range.
Well, that's why you'd end up on the budget, it's twenty-five. So, um, we're just going to make sure when we see a negative number on that line that you're compensating for us so we don't have a negative line.
No, of course, plowing and all the related cost is, it's variable. It depends on the winter.
Correct.
So you can have a really light winter and, you know, you underspend the budget all. So if we're overdrawn, where does that get covered from?
Well, one of the, if the bottom line, based on the warrant article, if the warrant article appropriates X amount of dollars for winter plowing, as long as the bottom line is not negative, then you're fine. And that's what they watch is the bottom line. But winter maintenance and general assistance are the only two that you can legally be overdrawn. We have to ask for ratification in the next town meeting, but by state law, you can overdraw those two accounts.
Is there any limit to how much you can overdraw?
No, I mean, the voters just have to approve it.
Okay.
And I noticed that last year's, according to the June twenty-twenty-two, there was twenty thousand in that salary line, not ten.
Yeah. Well, as a budget or actually?
As a budget.
Is that for just winter time, right?
Yeah. There's twenty thousand last year.
We didn't change it.
Well.
I don't know.
And they actually had a little over five thousand left last year.
So what happens if they underspend that line? Can it be used on other areas?
Well, it, within, it depends on how the warrant art, well, it depends on how the warrant article is written. I mean, if it said lump sum for X amount of money for all, for road maintenance, then yes, they can. But if it's specified for something, they can't. I mean, I'd have to pull up the warrant and see how their article is written.
Okay, um.
No, I've never, I've never been in a situation where we've had to go back and ask for more money because we went over. I, like, I'm-
Yeah, we've done it the last few years, that winter plowing.
Every year.
Every year.
No, I know, I know, I know, I know we go over, but like, I remember, like, we're not, I don't think we've ever had to have a town meeting or anything like that for it.
Yeah, there's always an article usually on the next warrant that's got, I mean, a few thousand dollars overdrawn.
Basically authorize the amount that we're overexpend.
To increase.
Well, no, I meant like in the middle of the, well, I meant like-
Oh, not in the middle. We wait for the following.
We've done that, we've done.
So it's the following year we go back and throw it out?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Um, okay, I'm going to ask the flip again. If we underspend that line, can that be used for, is that used for other things or does it basically get?
Not that I know of.
Does it get, does it go to the bottom line?
We don't have a reserve account anymore for winter.
No, not a reserve, but it's a fall to the town's bottom line. In other words, can you take that and spend it on, I don't know, whatever else in your budget or not?
Not that I know of.
None.
I'm going to say yes. So.
You say yes?
So Article thirty-seven, I'm a quick glance. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate three hundred and ninety-three thousand to appropriate X amount from L.RAP and to appropriate X amount from undesigned fund for district true road departments. Said funds to be dispersed after a project list has been presented to be expended as follows. That three ninety-three is broken down by winter maintenance, summer maintenance, flat ground and paving and reconstruction.
So they, they, they all are restricted budgets?
They're not.
They're not.
Line item though, in an actual amount, so that means they're all clumped together.
Right. They can spend three ninety-three, six seventy-four.
Okay.
Winter time should be separated for the simple reason is, the way you've got to set up here is you've got labor over here, okay, they're negative five thousand dollars, okay? Then you go down here and you got labor down here, okay, they're negative whatever, but you're allowed to go over the fifteen percent on the winter time. You're not allowed to go over the fifteen percent on the summertime. So what you've done is you've clumped them in, part of it you can, part of it you can't. How do you determine that?
And, and Tom, the other thing is that there is another warrant article somewhere here, in here that will allow for the rollover. Um, so to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following balances and allow the balance forward to be appropriated to the department. So District one and two, road surfacing and reconstruction are on there and summer maintenance funds are on there. So, and even though David says it's not a, it, it's not line item, you're right. Out of that three ninety-three, the article does say as expended as follows. So one of them is five thousand for flat ground. They can't go over that five thousand.
I'm thinking about two levels of authorizations or, or authority. One is what is approved by the, by the taxpayers.
Right.
And that is a level of authority that we have to make sure we stay within.
Right.
But within those lines that are approved by the taxpayers, there are various individual lines that there is discretion on.
Correct.
On the part of the selectmen. Is that correct?
Uh, it says selectmen and road commissioners. You, you know, with the-
The road commissioners have that discretion to move or is that the-
You have a road ordinance, so without going through and reading it, I would, a road commission, you know, an ordinance, I mean, has it-
The road commissioners cannot move money from one line to another line.
No, but, no, they can spend ninety-six thousand, eight eleven on winter maintenance, whether some of it's in subcontract or more in labor, they can spend that flat number.
But it's supposed to come to us to move from line to line.
Everyone is supposed to come do it for that.
So.
Are you guys aware of that?
Moving, I, I've never, I've never moved it.
I guess that's what we're getting at. I don't think, I don't think we have clear indication here about who can do what.
Looking at the bottom winter maintenance.
We should be, we should be separating the winter time in its own article. That way there, because that's, that's the line that we're allowed to go fifteen percent over. That should be completely separate from the other stuff that's being rolled over in the reserve accounts.
Yeah.
Okay, they can certainly be separated. It's like the easy warrant.
And that way there, by doing that, we say now you got a five, fifty-six hundred dollar negative and a labor line, you can make that adjustment on that just for that, that article. You know, I'm doing it for the entire article.
Right. And the article does, I mean, I didn't read it to word for word, but it does specify the account number. So for winter maintenance, you know, they would never be able to do that. And you're right, it's cleaner if, if we do as you recommend it, but it is set up now so they wouldn't be able to go into one of the other lines anyways.
I think what I'm, I'm, uh, I'm trying to get at is what I'm saying is there isn't clarity on the part of the road commissioners versus the town about exactly who has what discretion and authority. And I think that ought to be cleared up. If there are certain lines that they have discretion over, we all ought to agree to what that is. If there are lines they don't, you ought to know what that is and you ought to understand what the process is. If you need, if you need to ask for something, to come back and ask for that. But in the last year that I've been here, I don't think I've had one conversation about those budgets. And I, so I'm not sure there is a process in place that should bring that thing, those kinds of things forward. And, because otherwise, if you don't know what the rules are, you can't follow.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, uh, we ought to clarify that.
So just from understanding, so then let's say they have ninety-six thousand for winter maintenance and it's been broken down into ten thousand for labor, twenty for subcontract or anytime they go over that, one of those individual lines, even though they were within the ninety-six, they're to come to the board for approval.
I, I, I would ask our former-
Right.
Road commissioner, be able to straighten this out.
What I did, there wasn't a road commissioner ordinance. I did do my job because I was allowed to. So, but, um, what do you call it? Um, no, I'd always move those lines around. When I was, when I, when I, but I didn't have a road commissioner ordinance that dictates what they're allowed to do.
I'm just saying, David, I mean, you understand these budgets.
They should be, they should be able to move these, I would think, you know, because when you put these numbers in, a lot of it, you know, you're, they're not, I wouldn't say made up, but they're rough, rough numbers.
Yeah, it's like, wow, you don't know what it's going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, yeah, because I mean, you've got a line, you know, um, what's a, uh, one oh five, five oh four there. Uh, you got sixteen thousand dollars left in that line.
Jennifer, do you see what I'm getting at?
Well, I do, and I, I absolutely agree, but I don't know why they're not doing winter maintenance. I mean, if they get ninety-five thousand for winter maintenance, whether it's them doing it or whether it's their subcontractor, why aren't we just paying it out of all the winter maintenance line?
Yeah.
I'm not sure why we have to break it down by.
I don't think we do.
Yeah, this is, this is probably-
Because that's what happens, and not to interrupt you, David, but we, you know, we know they can spend ninety-six thousand. Sometimes their subcontractor might do a little work, more work that week. Sometimes it may be them.
Yeah.
They, they should only, honestly, we could shrink-
One or two lines.
Yeah, you know, road equipment.
Period.
Done.
Right.
Okay, um, labor, done. You know, other than that, everything else is subcontracted through road equipment. You've got two lines on that whole thing. Well, you, you keep the FICA, the med, you know, that way there for the labor part of it.
Materials is probably another one.
No, the materials are complete whole different, um.
It's got to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got to be another budget.
Yeah, yeah.
The sand saw.
Has you approved the rates and the material, you know, you, you approve the individual rates. There's no reason to separate that lines. We know their, their hourly rate is this, period. We know they get this amount for this. Just winter maintenance, don't go over it. You know, summer maintenance, don't go over it.
Yeah. So.
Because the, the most that's going to happen is the next year you're going to adjust and that's probably what happened last year. Last year their laborer had fifty-five hundred dollars left over. So they lowered it to ten thousand and moved it somewhere else. At the end of the day, they're still not spending more than ninety-six thousand.
Even though I shouldn't have lowered it because it got a raise. You never lower-
Well, no, that's just what happened. I'm not telling you why it happened, but.
Okay.
So you guys have to really go back and, I, I, myself, I would suggest getting rid of most of these lines with Kelly. Which ones you have to keep in there, you keep in there? The other ones gone and, um, adjust those numbers. We, we have to start adjusting the winter time because everything's getting more expensive and the line keeps getting overdrawn every year where they shouldn't be being overdrawn because of inflation. You're going to inflate the number to the times.
My only comment about putting everything together is if there are multiple items in there and they are subject to different kinds of inflationary pressures. And you've got one item that is going, fuel, is going up by, is, it, it tracks differently than labor and sand.
That's why you have, that's why you have your labor line.
Yeah.
The road and equipment, the fuel, the equipment and the inflation, all that will all be impacted altogether in that.
Is that in the rates that are?
That's all part of the rates.
Okay.
So that's all, it's already consumed.
And that would be its own line. So.
All right.
There's a few that certainly could be combined.
Okay. Kelly, have you got a, um, do you follow what, what's going on here?
Yep.
If you can help these guys, uh, reorient these budgets.
Consolidate it to a few lines, so it's easier for everybody.
What we should do, the same with summer and all that stuff, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'm looking at the summer line.
Spring cleanup on mine. I've never even put in for spring cleanup.
Let's look at the rates and, because that's a good piece of discussion for the board. Do you look at the rates they proposed and see where your thoughts are on those?
Have we got a package yet?
Um, there should be, right there. Oh, right to your right a little bit, Tom.
Oh.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So guys, go over what increases you're looking for on the rates and we can work out the numbers on the lines.
So what we thought about, and we've had discussion, is instead of using to try and make Kelly's life easier, because the way fuel is crazy, we figured we'd figure out the number that bring the fuel from four thirty to six dollars and just increase the rates for that and so, across the board.
I, I spoke, as the liaison, I spoke to the road commissioners and we're at the point where we, the fuel has gone to a stabilization point.
Yeah, it has.
We're not way up here at almost seven dollars a gallon, uh, but we're still paying every week, um, these surcharge for fuel. This is the time where we budget to the point where we know where we, we've been flatlined at. Let's, and, increase the, uh, surcharge. That's what I call it.
Yeah.
Okay, and to the point where you've inflated your numbers to the point where now four dollars a gallon is, you know, we know that's where it's gonna be, four to five or whatever it's gonna be, uh, six dollars is when we're gonna start paying the surcharge again. We're gonna increase that number. That way there, everything is correct.
Is it now five? Hmm? What are you paying now, five dollars?
So the surcharge goes into effect when the rate goes up?
Depends.
When the rate goes to six?
After six, correct?
Or you're talking about like right now?
What is it right now?
Four thirty.
Yeah, I was gonna say it down there.
So we, we figured out the difference between four thirty and six dollars, and we gave all the trucks that have diesel or potential diesel trucks that rate, and then that's it.
Dollar seventy increase? You gave them just a flat dollar seventy increase?
Dollar, uh, no, because it's twenty.
Well, I thought you said difference between.
It's two dollars.
We went up twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars, so it's every.
Twenty-five cents.
Every twenty-five cents is two dollars.
Oh, I see you figured it out.
So we figured twelve dollars more per truck, just on the trucks, that's all we were asking for. And then, we weren't asking for any other raises on anything else. I don't, no.
And then no fuel surcharge after.
Up till six dollars.
Up to six dollars.
Up to six dollars.
I mean, that's how this sheet is, that's how I did this sheet.
Yeah.
And there was a, there's a few on here that, um, weren't legible, so we, we need to go back over this for the diesel trucks because the ones I have highlighted.
Yeah, pickup service truck, that's, um, usually have just a gas truck.
Okay, so.
That wouldn't be affected.
So, um. So you increased the two-wheel drive twenty-six thousand over to, from ninety-four to a hundred and six.
Yep. Where are you seeing that, David? I see seventy-one to eighty-three on.
Right here, GBW, we go across. So.
So we're talking about a, uh, uh, over a twelve percent increase?
Plus, then you add a two dollar an hour on top of that for the, nope, for the Sander.
I think we did ask for a couple dollars on the Sanders.
So.
Just due to the maintenance cost on them.
Yeah, and.
It, it, uh, it would have been nice to have the percentage increases here. I'm calculating these and most of them look like they're over ten percent.
Well, we're just going off the fuel. You know, if the fuel stays, this is just a fuel increase. To make it, instead of four dollars and thirty cents, it's six dollars, so.
All right, maybe I'm not understanding. I go to the backhoe, two-wheel drive, current is seventy-one eighty-one. That's an hourly rate?
Hourly rate, yep.
And it's going to eighty-three, a twelve dollar increase, which is probably, if, if, that's a dollar, right? Twelve dollar increase, which has gotta be over a fifteen percent increase. And so.
Fuel costs have gone fifteen, is what you're trying to get to.
No, I understand that. I mean, we can keep the fuel surcharge and not put any rates up.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, we were just trying to make it easier.
Wow.
But, you know, we talked about it and bring up the fuel surcharge to six dollars, but if we can.
I get the fuel, I, I understand the fuel.
That's the only.
Kelly, at the end of the day, when you're doing, when you're right now, uh, say the plow trucks, okay? Um, when you, you do the rates and then you figure out the fuel surcharge, say on a truck that's twenty hours a week, what's the fuel surcharge on something like that, rough?
Well, it depends what the, what the gas price is.
Yeah, uh, right now, right now, last week.
We, we didn't have fuel surcharge last week because the gas price dropped.
Did it go down far enough?
It went down far enough, they didn't get fuel. It was three ninety-nine.
Yep, but the week we worked, it was five nineteen.
Yeah.
But the week we get paid is three ninety-nine, so we didn't get the fuel surcharge for the five nineteen.
Three ninety-nine for diesel?
Yes, it just went down.
Yeah, you should have.
Only at boonies, you go down to the depot, it's five bucks.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive still there, but.
So for every twenty-five cents over four dollars and thirty cents, they get two dollars extra per hour?
Yes.
So if it was, you know.
So you're basing your numbers on how many, uh, how many, how much a gallon? Five, is that what?
Six.
Six.
So that would change the fuel surcharge to six instead of four dollars and thirty cents, so we.
Am I understanding that these increases here are largely being driven by fuel?
We were just trying to change the fuel surcharges.
No, I mean, when I look at these increases on all these equipment and activities.
Most of, most of the winter, you guys have been paying not much per hour extra.
Yeah.
Well, we're not tw- not tw- not twelve, but.
Pretty close to it. We were five seventy-nine at one point.
It was five ninety-nine, not even a month ago.
Yep.
It seems to me there would be two rates. You got one with and without the surcharge. Is that a fair way of looking at it?
That's what it is now.
That's how it is now.
That's how it is now. So are these rates with or without the surcharge?
We don't have rates. Well, all we're doing is adding to the.
Adding to the current rate, right.
So there's actually not a rate set in stone.
Right, it's dependent on the price of diesel that week, and we use.
I, I get it. Diesel's going up and down, and at certain thresholds, it triggers a surcharge, correct?
So the problem is with this, I understand what you guys are doing, because I told you to do the six, okay? But we have to find a happy medium here, because it's, say it's five ninety-nine, we've dropped to three. Now, I, I hope that we get down to two something at some point, but the problem is, we do that, you guys are giving yourself a twelve dollar increase on your rates and we're only paying two something a gallon of fuel.
We'll just leave.
So, so what, what, no, 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 because I told you guys to make an increase, whether or not the twelve dollars is where we want to be or not, okay? Um, we have to find a happy medium and make sure that we're, we're on the, we're all on the winning end of this.
Right.
Okay, because if we go down to two something a gallon, you guys got a twelve dollar increase on each piece of equipment, which, whether or not that's correct or not, I don't know, so.
Maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but it seems to me you've got, um, you've got rates that vary based on where energy pricing is. You, and the rates include the cost of the equipment and, uh, labor and fuel. And the variable in there is, the one that varies is fuel.
Correct.
The other two components are fixed, so as.
The other component is usually, you usually go through the state rates.
Okay.
You go through, uh, neighboring towns and what they're paying out on equipment. You've, that's what we, what, what I'd like you guys to do is, before we even think about these, is go through the state rate, go through some of the towns in the area, what they're paying for equipment or whatever, okay? So whether or not this can be justified, if it can be justified, we're fine with that, okay? Uh, but we, we're really, at the end of the day, we've got to go through the state rates and everything else, make sure we're.
And I think we've pulled them, you have them.
I, I have them on my phone and they, I believe they, they even went up too, but I mean, it's not.
Whether or not they went up, I want the percentage they went up.
Right.
Compared to what you guys are going.
You guys would like us to go back and just, you know, look at the state rates and all that, then come back.
Yeah, well, you should have anyways.
Well, I did, we, I did like, um, once I finally found them, but it was a little too late out for my budget.
Yeah, because I mean, honest, at the end of the day, like Tom's saying, this is, what do you figure increase is gonna be fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent, that's what.
Well, at these rates, they're going up over, some of them over fifteen percent. I'm just trying to understand, is that because we, we're basing on a full fuel charge at six bucks or?
Yes.
It, it seems to me you've got, depending on how many thresholds or levels you've got for fuel rates, if there are only two, um, that's fine, then you get two sets of rates. And depending upon where energy pricing is, if the price is six, you're gonna use this rate. If the price is four, you're gonna use that rate. Is that?
I understand what you're saying.
No, that's fair.
Right, and, and so. But I can't tell what the energy pricing assumption is in these rates, can you?
I don't know the calculation they used to get to that point.
And, um.
So we'll just, we'll just go back and we'll, after, we'll go back and read.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying.
And, um, this is not my field. If it doesn't make sense, please explain to me why, because.
We just came up with that number.
I don't want to ask you to do something that either puts you at a disadvantage or, or.
Well, that's why I told them.
Doesn't make sense. I wanna, wanna do the right thing, but I wanna be able to understand where these rates are coming from, what the underlying assumption is, and I think it's fuel, which is the variable, the rest of it is fixed.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
So I just wanna, when we have these rates, it's because we think fuel is here or here or here.
So myself, I, when I was road commissioner, we hit four thirty once, and I didn't even put in for this fuel surcharge for, you know, an extra dollar an hour or whatever, it was, it was, it was kind of a slap in the face. Myself, um, when I price out jobs, I, I figure out the fuel.
Yeah.
I figure out roughly what it's gonna be, kind of, this is kind of what I was trying to get these guys to do, get to the point where we don't need to do the surcharge, get out of the fuel surcharge business. Um, but at the same time, we do understand that the, the fuel fluctuates.
It's so variable right now.
It could be a new war start somewhere, and before you know it, you'll be paying, you know, ten dollars a gallon, and we obviously do not want these guys to be digging the brunt of that. Best thing for these guys to do is the same thing we're gonna do with other departments, is we need a comparison, make sure that, um, we're in the ballpark. I think that'd be good for everybody.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Can do that.
The winner, where are we here now? We, we kinda skipped around a little bit here, so, um, I see, where are we? Where's?
So David, if it's okay, based on the combination of some of the lines, um, the rec is not gonna be able to make it for four. We're gonna move her to next week, so we've got about fifteen minutes. Do you wanna talk about maybe their paving and special projects?
Yeah.
Well, let's go through the regular, let's, let's go through the regular budgets and see if there's any increase. I, I'm just, you know, on, on the maintenance.
Okay.
Let's get the, let's do the bare bones first before we get the good stuff.
So do you guys wanna keep going down through?
So public works.
We can make it.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Um, maybe we can do, finish up this today and the rec department, and maybe we should put the fire department off for our next meeting. Does that make sense, or is that not worth it?
Yeah, no. So the rec is already gonna come.
Okay, all right, because I think, I thought, uh, the fire department may need more time.
No, he's ready to go and he's taking time off of Sanford to be here, so.
Okay, fine, then we'll stick with it.
So, on, on, well, District One, road, road maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm trying to compare the both of you two right now, because you're both sitting here, just to kind of speed the process up. Uh, did you guys make an increase on those?
Uh, I love my labor, this, and the only thing I increased was my gravel.
I'm talking about the overall.
Overall, yes. We had, I think, uh, we were asking for extra twenty.
Extra twenty?
For our maintenance, yes.
Yeah, and, um, justification, what's the extra twenty for?
Uh, culverts and gravels, what I added on mine.
Okay.
The price of culverts have gone up quite a bit, and gravel's going up.
So this is one of those lines where I think there's like way too many lines, it doesn't make any sense to me, like. Okay, you got, we'll go with the supply line, culverts, I can understand that, but gravel and then materials. Well, gravel is a material.
Right.
I don't, I don't understand why we've got two different material lines that are the same thing. Uh, there's just, um, we've got ten thousand, so you've overdrawn that line by four thousand dollars almost, and you've got a material line that's overdrawn six thousand, uh, no, a thousand dollars. Um, so the whole supply line's withdrawn twelve thousand six hundred dollars.
So, but the District One, if that's what we're looking at, they went up on the gravel fifteen thousand.
I, I, I understand that, but, but you're jumping around, you got subcontracted services, okay? You got flaggers, well, isn't that the subcontract, part of the subcontracted services?
Mm-hmm.
Tree service is not part of the subcontracted services, because you're not doing the tree con.
Nope.
Okay, uh, roadside mowing.
Subcontracting.
Subcontracting.
Will does his, but.
But you're being paid, as a, the machine is being paid as a subcontractor, trying to get stump and brush.
So in theory, we could just eliminate all those lines, put in.
It doesn't make, subcontracted services should take care of six of those lines.
Right.
Am I right?
I, I couldn't agree more.
I, I just, there's a bunch of.
Make it simple.
Jumping around, a bunch of numbers to make it look like you know how to do numbers.
It's not as though there's some consistency year to year on each of those individual lines. They probably vary from year to year.
Yeah, it depends.
So you can't really budget at that breakdown level, put it all together.
No, because you have some numbers there, you got fourteen thousand left in that, but you're twelve thousand down over there, so you're just popping that number there anyways, to zero it out, so. I mean, I guess if it, if, if you wanna look at it and go, oh yeah, well, looks like we better go up on the tree cutting, you know, because we're eight thousand dollars behind on that, you know, we better decrease the line on, you're just shuffling numbers.
Right.
This is just.
As long as the bottom number is the same.
This is silly. Um, uh, yeah, so I would like to see that condensed down.
Yeah.
So it makes it easier for everybody, it'll make it easier for us, make it easier for the finance committee and everybody down, down here.
Works for me.
Um, surfacing, uh, you're asking for the two fifty, both of you?
Yep.
And.
What's that, an additional two fifty?
No, that's the original two fifty.
Now, in the prior year, that was a hundred?
It was two hundred.
A hundred, a hundred and fifty, we added a hundred to it, wasn't it? So we added an additional hundred thousand.
Yes, my point is, it's gone up significantly?
Yes.
And, um. Did I understand there's another request over the two fifty? Where you're asking for another two fifty each?
I'm asking for two fifty, I think it was less.
You're asking, you're not?
No, I only asked for one ninety-two.
So, so what is your total resurfacing asked?
One ninety-two, two fifty, so.
Oh, okay, so it's.
Almost four fifty.
Four fifty, and you're asking for five?
Yep.
Okay, uh.
Well, I just didn't wanna ask for the two fifty then not use it, then, you know, then.
No, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting to ask, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what the justification is.
My suggestion to them was, seeing that we went up a hundred thousand dollars last year on their payment budget, then they're coming and asking for an additional two fifty, I didn't feel that taking two fifty, throw it on top of the two fifty you already have.
No.
Okay, because everybody knows how government works. When a number gets plugged in, you don't take it away, okay? Um, so I felt that what they should be doing is, on the extra two fifty, um, do a, let's sort of like a special project where they line out, list the road.
Separate worn articles?
Separate worn articles. That way there, that two fifty didn't get plugged in with the original. And they're gonna, and that's why your number is less, because you're, you've come up with a project that's what?
That's one ninety-two to do the project.
What road is that, Will?
The H road.
Okay, and you're. Is that just to pave it?
Yeah, that's to grind it and pave it. The, the section I'm gonna do this year, that what, to do this, I need one ninety-two to do that, but to cover all my other projects, I can just do it out of the two fifty.
What sec, what sec, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say the same thing.
What section are you doing?
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna start from one oh nine, I'm gonna go to the Pine Ridge Campground for this year. I wanna, I wanna button up my projects I have open right now from last year, do this first section, and then I'll continue on. I have a plan for two more years to hopefully be done.
How do you, how do you, uh, uh, come to a conclusion that that work needs to be done this year?
Uh, because, uh, have you been to any of the public hearings we've had about the gravel pit? Have you been to any of the public hearings we've had about the gravel pits?
Oh, no, I understand that, that, I'm, it's, it's a.
Like, so I shouldn't come off like, so, I know, I mean, just.
I understand the H road. Is it widening the H road or just paving it?
No, we're gonna put twelve-foot travel lanes in. There's gonna be twelve-foot travel lanes, it'll be twenty-four feet altogether, so. The problem, the people that are concerned with the width, you know, people can't pass, you know, they're having troubles passing that, we're gonna eliminate all of that.
So this will take us from, uh, the beginning to, um.
The campground.
How many, is that a mile or so?
I think it's just, just shy of a mi- it's just, it's like four thousand feet.
And, and, and that's gonna be what, a hundred and what?
Hundred ninety-two, because I'm gonna grind it, we're gonna go right back, like West Shore Drive was, right down to Durra, and twelve-foot lanes. So you're gonna, you have a little bit more expense than you would just put like ten.
Do you figure, uh, hammering that hell out over here, because you're gonna be on the road two feet on each side, correct?
Yeah, right over here, yeah.
So you've got your price figured on, one, that hello.
Yeah, that's why.
What's that gonna do to like, uh, the speed limit and stuff? I mean, is that something that?
No, it's gonna stay the same with the.
I, I just, you know.
And they don't do thirty-five.
We, we, we don't, we don't determine the speed limit, the state would do a, a speed limit survey on that, but, um, so. That's what I suggested to them, that we put those and do separate worn articles, so, you know, because you're talking almost a half million dollars.
Right.
Extra.
It definitely should be.
And I didn't feel that just thrown in the regular was a good idea, so that's what you guys have done, correct?
Correct.
David, on the, um, so District One is one road, but District Two is a few different roads?
More, yeah.
So do you want them on their own? Can you tell them what roads District Two is and tell me if you want it in one article or you want each road separate?
Well, county road's my first one. I wanna at least get it grounded based, because that's what, you know.
Is that the original or the special project?
Special project.
Okay.
So county road, I've done two twenty-five hundred feet, I'd like to finish it to Fox's Ridge. I mean, it's deteriorating every year worse and worse. And just get a base on it, and then hopefully next year, top it, be done.
Sorry, what does that mean, get it based on it?
You get a base, they grind it, you get a, a fresh base on it, so a fresh hot top, like West Shore is.
Yeah, and then you go back and put a.
And then put the top, another two inches on top of it. Um, like in previous years, previous road commissioners, they haven't had the money, so they've been able to grind a road, resurface it, but not finish it. And they, you know, they've never had the money. So I have Peck Point and Youngs Ridge, I did last year. I'd like to get them finished, done, so I can, because we did from the red schoolhouse and all the intersection, because I'm hoping to do Buzzle Road if all goes well with the budgets, and get Buzzle done, so that neighborhood is ninety-five percent done.
Was some Buzzle done recently, Mike?
I've done a lot of work on Buzzle.
Okay, I don't know, for some reason I was thinking Buzzle.
I, I did a section on the end of it.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
But from this Red Schoolhouse to the corner, it needs to be done.
Do you have any plans, um, for Hopper Road in your future?
I'd like to, but I'm trying to pick the worst roads. I mean, I have French Street that just took a big chunk out today with the plow, I have now a divot like this in it, I'm like, I have Peck that is completely washed out, I was plowing it and we, I literally dug in, I thought I was going to have the plow under the truck. So now we have to have a small truck on that road, can't put a big truck on that road anymore. Uh, French Street's right there with it too, and I don't even have that on there, and that road is, you know that road, there's nothing, nothing left of that road.
I know you have a lot of projects on your side.
I have a ton, so I got to pick and choose what's the worst, and county is one of the worst.
Right, and that's traveled more, right?
Way more traveled, I mean, I could gladly blow off Buzzell Road, but I've got a lot of flack that I haven't touched it, and it's a bad disrepair from that culvert that's, abandoned culvert, and it's like a speed bump, and it's not safe.
Have you got a multi-year plan?
I did at one point, I haven't this year, recently, I haven't kind of gone through it to update it.
Yeah, there's supposed to be a three, a five, and a 10.
We did, I don't have it off the top of my head.
I think, I think one thing we want to do here, though, I don't want to screw up your plans or anything, but if you're going to say county road, you do county road, instead of, that's your special project, I would think with this money, that when you do a special project, you want to finish that project. So I would think you'd want to budget for the base, any overlay, that's a completed project out of that special project, so you don't have to worry about next year coming in and asking for more money to do a job that you've already asked to do a special project on. So I would, I would prefer that myself, but.
Would you do a separate article for each one, I mean, I would.
Or would you combine them in one? Did you, did I hear you say that Peacock Point and Youngs, you could get all done?
Completely.
So.
Be done.
We've been talking about the fact that we have a surplus, and what to do with the surplus, and, um, roads is sort of an obvious thing. Tax relief is another, and at some point, we're going to have to make some judgment about how to, how to allocate that money out. I think before we make any decision on that, we ought to understand what the, at least the three to five-year needs are for roads. Because if we go ahead and lower the tax rate, because, you know, that's a great thing to do, but if we find that we've got, you know, roads that definitely have to be done, two or three years from now, we want to know that now, not after we've made the reduction in taxes. So, um, I think, to me, a five-year plan, I don't know if that's realistic, you guys tell me, but at least a three-year plan.
Because the road ordinance.
It would be nice to have it, like, obviously you're going to be coming back.
And I think that ought to be in place to, to justify this increase of $450,000. I think we ought to know that over the next five years, we think we've got these roads that are going to have to be done in this way, it's got a $2 million price tag, and these are the priority of those projects, and we could take that, look at what we have in reserves, and does that make sense? And so, um, I would like to consider this 450 in the context of a five-year plan. Because I, that, I don't know, um, 500,000 is a lot of money. It's a, you know, to go from 200 or 300 to 500 to a million or 950, those are huge increases.
That's why I wanted to put it on a separate, separate article, that way there, um, because the increase is so large, it gives the town floor the. But at the same time, we, we really, we need an idea of exactly what road you want to do in the next five years. That way there, we can justify the 450.
That's right, it's part of a multi-year plan, as opposed to a number with, with some roads on it, not having any idea, at least for me, maybe you, I'm sure you do, what's coming down the pipe, what else do we have that's going to be coming up?
And as, as for the article itself, um, I think we would list each road that you want to do on that article. It would be nice, I would, I would like to, in that article, to list a, a number on each one of those roads. That way there, we don't have to worry about the flip-flopping of monies and this and that, and at least people at Town Meeting could see, okay, it's 250,000 for county, 100,000 for pack or whatever it's going, I'm just throwing numbers.
Yeah, we have the breakdown.
Okay, but on that article, for each one of those guys.
So within the same article, but an amount specific to the road?
Because, you know, at the end of the day, at Town Meeting, if you decide, well, four, five, um, the extra 250 is a little rich for my blood, they could say, well, we don't really need to do this road, they could make an amendment to pull that one road out, but you still have the other two roads you can still do.
Are all the roads you're doing now being ground down?
Yeah, I've had tremendous luck with everyone I've had, I mean, drive on any single one.
How much of a premium does that add to the cost of a road? In other words, if, if, if West Shore Drive was X, I don't know, 3, 250, had we just taken a different approach, what would the cost be?
I mean, if we didn't grind it?
Didn't grind it, yeah.
You know, what, like, you're talking about life expense, like, how long? Oh, I don't, I wouldn't give it like another 10 years, probably.
Another 10 years, and we, and we.
Ah, you know better than that, Will, when was the last time that road was paved?
A long time ago, probably.
Long, long time ago.
I mean, there was a lot of wheel rods in it and stuff.
What I'm trying to get at is, uh, if we're, if we're now on a mode where we're grinding everything, my assumption is that's a, that's the most expensive approach, correct?
Road building.
Yeah, you're rebuilding, I don't know, it's expensive, as opposed to a more traditional repaving job.
Shimmin overlay, like I did, I did a shimmin overlay.
Yeah, you're saying, um, West Shore Drive last done, it lasted how long, 20 years?
Well, over 20 years.
And, and so what was done, just a, uh?
All they did was just base it.
Okay, so, so they based it, so is that, is that 50% cheaper?
I can't remember off the top of my head, it was, uh.
Over four, was it 400?
It wasn't 400, it was in the 200 range.
200, but you figure the whole project's going to cost, how much?
Probably like right around 4, probably.
For what?
To do the whole road, to do everything.
For West Shore?
Yeah.
So, and it might have been two had we simply paved it?
It used to be $100,000 a shimmin overlay a mile of road, so if you double it, it would be 200,000.
Totally out of my field here, it's purely financial, but I'm, I'm trying to understand, if you can pave a road and get 20 years out of it, versus grind it down and get 30?
I think some of our roads we can, but some of our roads don't have good base, like I'm thinking about Flag Ground Road, okay?
What about Flag Ground Road?
You know, where it's down where it's kind of low and stuff, I mean.
On the Hopper Road.
Like Hopper Road, sorry, not Flag Ground.
Down by the swamp.
Yeah, I mean, if that was to be done, that probably needs to be just totally rebuilt.
That's another, that's another whole ballgame, the reason why it hasn't been done is because you can't just grind that road. That road's got stumps, it's got everything on that road.
Perfect example, Lebanon Road, anybody driven down Lebanon Road lately? It is a disaster, we tried to put a culvert in there and there was a tree in the.
I guess what I'm doing is I'm questioning or challenging why we're on a practice of grinding all of our roads. If we can get them done, if we can get them paved and get 20 years out of it, geez, that's.
I'm in the same boat, okay?
I understand.
On schedule, we've got.
Yeah.
You don't have to grind every road that you pave.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to get at, some you may have to, some you might not have to.
But like I did, two years ago, I did Bling the Shores, there's probably 50 cracks in it already in two years. So now water's getting in there, it's just going to make it worse, I did a shimmin overlay.
At the same time, at the same time, you, you, of course, you know, we bring the state down, they can put the little things across how much traffic you got on that road, but if you take a road that's not traveled a boatload, it's a secondary road, whether or not spending all the money on a secondary road against very little traffic, where you can spend that money on a primary artery, Acton, and do the complete job, where you're going to save on that part. You know what I'm, you know, that's what he's trying to get to, I believe, I don't believe West Shore Drive needs to be grounded myself. There were sections that did need, I don't think the whole thing needed.
No, and the rest of it's not, it's just going to be.
The lower half is not going to be.
From Willow Street to the end, it's in pretty good shape, they're just going to like.
But you get my point.
No, I understand what you mean.
I.
We could stretch the money a little bit.
That's right, and 20 years is a long time, you know?
20 years, I ain't worried about it.
It's like, I, I think, so, um, let's get a five-year plan.
Okay.
Let's consider the, the various ways in which we can approach these projects, whether it's a, a resurfacing, grinding, I don't know, maybe there are other, other, um, ways of approaching it, um, okay?
Sounds good.
We're going to strike these budget lines up?
Yep, we'll take care of that. Thank you, guys.
Later.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome.
So you're going to be on page three of your expense report and page six of your initial worksheet.
This, page six?
That's page six, your other one is page three.
Okay, give us a minute to get set here. Okay, and page three on this?
Right.
Oh, correct.
Okay.
Boy.
He come prepared.
I wouldn't expect anything less.
Thank you.
Just trying to make Wayne smile.
That's tough.
I got one. That's just the wage table that you asked for, Tom?
Thank you, thank you for doing this.
That's some of that.
So these are current for all these towns? Great.
Where am I here?
The only one I couldn't get, obviously, was Newfield, uh, which I should hopefully get that sometime, but I don't have it for today. Do we want to talk about that, or where do you want to start?
Well, this is the elephant in the room, let's start with this one.
All right, so, there's, there's the numbers, uh.
I'm trying to.
What I struggle with, with this, and what was asked for, is that, uh, currently, some of these towns and departments are in the middle of their budget process, so these numbers may change, obviously, between now and the spring, right? So, and on top of that, not every service provided is the same. As in, as you can see, I put some notes at the bottom there, Shapley only staffs EMS only, they don't cross-staff fire trucks like we do. Newfield only has one person on duty, uh, for the ambulance, they're working on adding a second person potentially this year, but it's got to go through town process, uh.
Does that change, let's say you're in one of those towns versus Acton, does that change sort of the market rate for an individual that is in town A versus B? I, I understand they staff them and they have different procedures, but if you've got a particular type of, uh, certification, does their, their approach to staffing really alter the market value of that wage?
Well, you just hit the nail on the head, it's more qualifications, so some of the, like Shapley only requires you to have an EMS license.
Got it.
I require, we require to be fire, fire one and two, and have an EMS license, whether it's a basic advance or paramedic. So there, there's two qualifications there, two different sets of schools.
I get the qualifications, and, and I, yeah, maybe I misinterpreted, you were talking about one of the towns, and I thought they were comparable positions, yet they had, they only had one person, as opposed to we having a different staffing approach. That doesn't really, so long as they have the same qualifications.
Right.
That doesn't alter the market rate for those positions.
But that, like that, particularly, if you're talking about Newfield or Shapley, they're only staffing EMS position, they're not staffing to go fight a fire.
So they're not comparable.
They may not have that qualification.
Okay, I kind of feel like a dummy here, but I want, so the FF.
Firefighter EMT basic is the lowest level of EMS, uh.
But the P.
Is a paramedic.
Paramedic, okay, that's the, that's the.
That's the highest level of care we can provide in the street.
That's what I thought, now, looking at these numbers here, right now, we're at 2350, correct?
Today, correct.
I'm just looking at them.
Yeah.
I'm going firefighter P.
Correct.
You know, just, just to make this easy.
Yep, yep.
And we go across the board, we're at 2350, Alfred right now, as of right now, is at 2168, Sanford's at 2538, Limerick at 2564, and Waterboro's at 2501, I'm not going to use this number at 2750 from Lebanon, because I don't think Lebanon should be dictating any, any.
No, no, and that, I put that there, he, the fire chief over there is asking for a full-time paramedic and for this year's budget, go, like, for, starting in July, and that's what he has proposed for a starting rate for that same position certification that we offer.
There's quite a bit of variability here.
Limington is even higher.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm looking at it, what, oops, sorry.
No, I just, I was looking at Limington, and that's the highest one for that position, if you look at.
Well.
What's it say, 28, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and, and the other downfall of, I'll say downfall, it might not be the right word, but Acton is the most farthest west in the county, right? So a lot of people got to come, I got some quick stats here, that we have people driving, uh, anywhere, the closest one is 13 minutes to, uh, 48 minutes to get here from there.
Those are.
Residents, those are the, uh, some of them are full-timers and some of them are per diems, correct?
Yeah.
But it's just, you got to get, we have to encourage people to drive or to come here and work for us, right?
Work of you ain't enough.
For some people it is, but for some people it's not. So.
So you got to pay more to get them out here, is that what you're saying, Wayne?
That's part of, that's part of the game, unfortunately, and, and I, we are in a market, like Rick had obviously said last year, where this industry is in a, is in a low spot, there's not enough people to work all the jobs that are open out there right now. You literally can go anywhere, if you've got these qualifications and you want to travel wherever, you can make a lot more money. But if I, if I got the qualifications of the FF, you know, the, whatever, highest one there, and Sanford's paying 2538, right? But Acton's paying 2350, obviously that line will be adjusted, I'm sure, but if I'm, wouldn't I want to work for Acton instead of Sanford if I was going to make the same money, because I'm going to work probably a fraction of it?
Yes and no, I've already, Jennifer and I started having this conversation the other day, right? So there's, it's, it's more than just the money, obviously, we all know, we've been talking about benefits packages.
I've talked about the per diems more than anything, but.
Right, so, yes, in theory, that, that would work for some people, but also, like to say, on the flip side, some people want to be more busier, they don't want to be, you know, not that we're not busy here, we're growing every year, but we're not doing 3,000 runs.
It's a different pace.
That's what I'm trying to, it's not apples and apples a workload.
Not, not specifically, correct, but when you're dying here, it doesn't matter whether you're there or here, it's the same job, right?
You're washing a truck for $28 an hour.
Sure, but we're, but we're, the fire and EMS world, it's an insurance policy, we know that, right?
Does that mean you want to be mindful of something like Sanford, but you don't want to try to be Sanford?
Correct, right, we have a work environment here.
It's more important is finding other, what I'll call smaller towns, that are more comparable to us, and trying to benchmark ourselves there as opposed, and know that we can lose people to Sanford, so we don't want to be, you know, too low to them, but we don't necessarily need to be at Sanford's rates.
Correct.
Is that fair statement?
I, I would, I would, to a certain point, yes.
You're looking at.
We, but we have to, again, we have to encourage people to want to come here to work, and it obviously stems a lot, for some people, it solely stems on the, on the dollar figure, when you can, but we've already lost a couple employees that went somewhere else to make five-plus dollars more an hour.
No, one of the full-timers.
No, we've had a couple of our full-timers try to test to go elsewhere, just in the last year.
You got to expect that anyways, but, you know, I, we're looking at the per diems, I, I look at the per diems a little different, we're not losing full-timers yet, right?
Not, not yet.
No, yeah, I understand.
They've tested.
Per diems, I, I look at smelling mercenaries, they go from town, they're working every different town, so, I mean, when you say we lost them, they just didn't pick a shift up.
No, but they're going to work for these other agencies that are paying more money, right? They can do the same.
The way to track that and, and to quantify it is to calculate the turnover rate.
Sure.
Precisely, how many people are you losing, and how does that measure over time? If the turnover rate is spiking up, that's another indication that you've got a salary problem.
You're going to find that all the way across the board, every occupation right now, the turnover rate's huge, because people, you know, because.
People ain't more to go.
Well, there's a lot of wages are going up, I'm just saying, if we had that data, to me, it would be, it would be convincing.
And it's not so much.
If we got a turnover rate of 20%, 25%, man, we got a problem.
I also don't.
Maybe not.
Right, I also don't think it's so much people leaving either, as it is people not taking as many shifts, right? They could still work here and only work 25, I'll just use an example, they work 24 hours a month.
They're just not taking the shifts.
But they're not taking extra ones, like, we have a lot of open shifts right now, because a lot of people just aren't working the hours that they used to, right? We need to hire a few more people, but as we know, that's just not easy to do right now.
So, at the end of the day, what do you propose in front of increasing these laws?
I don't see a proposal here, I just see what we have.
No, that's, that's just current data, which is what I was asked to provide, in my, in the budget, I have budgeted for, uh, the additional 250 from last year that was talked, not, not funded, but was talked, talked about funding this year, that's, that's where I stopped. And until I get current data, right, this is, at the end of the day, this data is old data, it's going to be old data comes July.
Well, come March for a lot of the towns.
Right, for some, it's going to be old data, which is why, obviously, I misunderstood what you originally asked with wanting it now versus.
This is what he asked for, current rates.
Yeah, so. This works great.
Yeah, I know.
So I think, again, when some of those numbers come out, and I, I'll just speak for, I'll use Sanford, right, because that's where I work full-time. Those wages are going up. We're in contract negotiations, right, it's going up.
What do you think it's going to go up by?
I don't know. It's, it's, it's probably, right now, currently, as a basic firefighter EMT, that's the number, that's the one at the top, in the city of Sanford, where I work full-time, I make more than our full-time firefighter paramedic here. By almost a dollar more an hour, and that's the lowest level of care, that's, that's, you know, three times the amount of schooling and then some to be the paramedic.
So you're proposing 250, a bump on all these rates?
Yeah.
On those, those three rates?
Three, yeah.
So bring you to what, 22, 23, and 26, is that right?
Correct. So what that's going to end up doing.
It's going to put us more in line with everybody else currently.
And we're just, we're chasing our tails still, right, is that what you're telling us?
What do you mean?
With Sanford, well, because if we give a 250 an hour rate, so, uh, 250 added to the 25, I mean, the 2350, add 250 to that, is 20, 28. And so that just brings us above Sanford.
There are, correct.
And then Sanford's going to turn around and give their pay rate, so we're still going to be behind the eight ball, don't matter if we give the 250.
There are some, there are some departments that are offering 30-plus dollars an hour for a firefighter paramedic. Or, or, and I, we didn't, I didn't do North Burke, because we didn't talk about North Burke, but North Burke Rescue has just put on four full-time paramedics, no firefighter certifications, $31, $32 an hour starting fee.
So I guess the question. I guess the question we should be asking is this. If we're going to try to be comparable to these other towns, which sounds like we have to open up the piggy bank and we're going to start paying thirty-some dollars an hour. How can we make this, how can we make the wages go up? And, and keep it so that the entire budget doesn't, just, because that's what it's going to do.
Yep. So that's why A, I finished off the two fifty this year and see where those numbers truly fall next year. But you're right, we're probably going to be chasing our tail. We're a small town, right? Our, our organization for our staffing is still young, right? We've only been doing full-time staffing for five, six years, five, six years? So.
And then five, six years.
Young, right? We started off, we started off super low to begin with.
Oh, and that, in the five or six years of being full-time, okay? More than that, isn't it?
Johnson was the chief, Johnson was the first full-time chief, so three.
Just feels like a long time, I guess.
Six.
How much, how much does the two fifty cost us?
My question is.
Is it really reflected in this budget request right here?
Yes.
So almost ninety thou, oh, well, yeah.
The total, the total for.
What's it cost us?
The total for, obviously, we added the full, the full-time.
No, but just the two fifty piece, I mean, what does that cost us?
Oh, I don't, I.
For full-time.
I did the whole, I got the whole salary number. But I'll have just a two fifty number.
Okay, what's the whole salary?
Well, I can, I can tell you, last year, last year's budget numbers for those two lines, the per diem line and the full-time firefighter line, there's a difference of sixty-six thousand.
Okay.
So roughly, probably that number, because that's what I've gone up by.
Well, the question I have is, to get back to where I was going, was you're talking about hiring more people on. Okay, now we see all these per diems, you know, their rates range from what they are when they come in the door.
Correct.
But you can't handpick, I want to, I want to cheap out today and go with the nineteen fifty instead of the twenty, twenty-three fifty. You get what you get, right?
Yeah, it depends on qualifications, yeah.
Okay. But whoever signs up for that, you pay them for whatever the qualification is.
Correct.
So by going to a system where we start hiring a couple of extra people on, can we start dictating that? Would that be more affordable?
Really like having less per diem, i- if we're going to get more full-time?
Yeah, and you'll see in his budget, he lowered the per diem.
I was going to say, I noticed.
So because we, because we went to that fourth full-time firefighter EMT, which obviously, uh, full-time firefighter paramedic, which obviously was already budgeted for in the per diem line, so I just switched lines. Uh, so I'll have four full-time firefighter paramedics is the goal.
What I, what I'm asking is, I know with benefits, everything, it inflates the number, but if we hired on, say, some basics, okay?
That would be the lowest rate, right?
And we're, we're getting some basics in here to offset some of the per diems that are rolling in at the highest rate.
So that's, that's what the per diem is. Not all of my per diems are paramedics, not all of them are basics and not all of them are advanced EMTs. I currently have two of us, or there's not many of us that cover shifts or work shifts that have basic EMT licenses. I'm trying to hire some people, but at the same time, those people that I'm looking to hire are already working on increasing their license level at their full-time job. So therefore, when they come to work, if they, if they decide to want to work for us here, they, I can't guarantee, they're not necessarily going to be a basic.
Yeah.
Which is why my budget numbers reflect budgeting for firefighter paramedics, two of them around the clock, because I have numerous people upping their license to paramedic status. They're in the classes right now. I have a couple that are in, not, that's, not that we're paying, but they're in their full-time job, are upping their licenses. So when they come to work for us, we have to pay them at the appropriate rate.
Yeah.
So before, the numbers were done off an average, the per diem partner, because I have, we have the full-time firefighter paramedic that works and then a per diem partner with that person. So two people, twenty-four, seven, around the clock. Prior to me in the budget, they budgeted for an average between the advanced firefighter and the basic firefighter, which was a fifty cent difference. So when I have days that are double paramedics, I'm already upwards of three dollars behind the budget per hour for that individual that I don't have budgeted. Yes, it works, it sort of works itself out, because some days, there may only be an advanced in the basic. So yeah, we're saving that dollar there, but I can't guarantee that.
You know, when I look at the bottom line, and I assume this is all the fire department, although I look at some of these categories, I'm not sure that we, they are all, your, your budget's going up, proposed twelve point three percent.
Yeah, I don't have that, yeah, I don't have that because I didn't have the numbers.
And how much is in there for new positions? For a new position, is it the one new position you're asking for?
Yeah.
How much is that?
That number, I don't know what the insurance numbers are, but that number is already in the budget.
Roughly, it's already.
It's already in the budget, because all I did was take that paramedic from the per diem line, and now it's in, now they're full-timers.
Did, did, did one completely offset the other or partially?
Well, it should be a partial.
Partial.
It is partial, because your, your per diem is only a difference of seventeen thousand, and that's not a full-time position. So go to your.
Of the old, of the new budget or the old budget?
Well, he wants to know how much is that one full-time position?
Net costing, net costing you, after you take out the money from per diems.
Right.
Add in the money for the new position, how much is that new position costing you?
Take your, your paramedic, your highest rate.
The one thing it should cost actually should be the benefits.
Correct. Because I'm already budgeted for that.
Yeah, but that's not what, what I think is in here, because the per diem line went down less than your salary line went up. That's what I thought I saw.
On the current budget that I proposed, both lines are the same.
No, let's look, okay. See where, so the full-time position went from one fifty-six to two forty. So what that, that represents two different things. First of all, he budgeted on the entire year being covered by two paramedics.
Okay.
Just in case, because that's worst case, and he added a fourth person. So there's an increase from the two paramedics and the fourth person. What Tom is asking you is, and you, you lowered your per diem by seventeen thousand, but that one fourth person has to make more than four. What is the most that fourth person can make in a year, less the seventeen thousand for the per diem, is what he wants to know?
Yeah.
So how did you come up with the rate for one person, Wayne? What did you calculate that on? Paramedic at twenty-six times how many hours a week?
Forty-two hours a week, six.
Forty-two, okay, times fifty-two weeks. Is that how you came up with it?
Yeah.
So that's approximately fifty-seven thousand.
That should have been deducted out of the.
Less the seventeen thousand.
So it's forty thousand?
Yes, that's what he's asking.
I'll tell you where I'm going, is you're the fire chief. And to me, this salary schedule is very helpful. The two fifty makes sense to me, looking at this. However, twelve point three percent doesn't.
And that's, that's across the entire budget.
No, I understand that, but that's basically what we're asking taxpayers to, to fund.
Yeah.
Is a twelve point three percent increase. And I'm not, I, I think.
Let's talk about the whole budget though, not just the salary lines. Cause if some of those lines went up significantly.
Okay. But there is what I call inflation, which is salaries and some of those other lines that are going up. And then you've got what I call programmatic change. You want additional staff, right? Or maybe you want some additional supply and equipment to be able to add some things that, that you need added. My question, for me, twelve and a half percent is too much for the department to increase by. And I think what I would say is, I'd love to hear what your priorities are. If, if we can't afford twelve and a half percent, if you, if we only have X amount, and I don't know what that number is, what's your priority list so that we can, and I would imagine salaries is probably at the top of the list.
It has to be.
And so I think.
We don't survive.
So that one is right up there. What are the other increases for, including staffing?
I would love to go over it. I would love to go over it. I got it all right here.
Okay.
So I, and I haven't asked for anything increased-wise that isn't needed. So quite honestly, if you look at my budget lines.
Oh, let's go through it.
Yeah, so the salaries obviously went up with the two fifties across the board for everybody. What, the stipends ma- made a decent jump, because I'm pretty sure it's at.
Thirty-four five.
Seth, yeah, thirty-four, and it went up to forty-five. I have, in the letter that I provided for each description of the line, I've got a decent junior program that no other town around us offers. And I have, currently have sixteen juniors, sixteen. That's the most we've ever had in the history of the department, which is what is replacing us old timers at some point. So.
Old timer, listen to this guy.
So that went up, right? I've already had to cut back their training. They meet every Monday, literally every Monday, and they're eager to do it. I've cut it back because I can't afford to pay them this year. They're done. They're start, they're doing, they're doing twice a month. Uh, so those increases are.
What do they stop paying for?
They, they come up and do training.
Okay, the training people who do the training.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Wayne, what's the junior rate at? I know we just went over the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-six, but what is their increase with the two fifteen?
Fourteen or something.
Something, I think.
Yeah. Fifteen something?
Yeah. Uh, so the rest of that, the five percent for myself, the two fifty for everybody else, and then obviously, the increase for the stipends, which covers all members' trainings of the department, to include the juniors. Obviously, juniors are just a huge part of it. All our calls, our responses, obviously, I can't dictate the amount of calls, right? So the next line that went up was fire equipment. There was currently ten thousand dollars in there, as we spoke, Tom.
I, I get it. I get it.
I've, I've budgeted for three sets of turnout gear. By NFPA standard, I can't allow someone to go into a burning building without, uh.
We wouldn't want to be regulated, do we, yeah?
So in, under Chief Johnson, they purchased twenty sets. And so by doing three sets a year for the next five years, that gets us fifteen sets. So that will be short a little bit, but not all those sets have to be, they're not just fully out of service, right? The juniors could wear them, other people that aren't support personnel could wear them. It's not just throw it away.
If you need, what'd you say, fifteen? If, that's your goal, is to get fifteen.
Yeah, over the course of, over the course of five years.
Does that mean that people aren't, there are people today that don't have the kind of suits they need in order to be?
If I hire anybody on new, no. I, I have some stuff in the closet that's still in, in the year range, but that's only if it fits that individual.
Put another, if, if you got yourself caught up, how many would you need to buy thereafter, a year?
I would probably still have to be on that same cycle, probably.
Three a year?
Roughly, I mean, they, prior to me, there's always been, try to do two sets, but the cost of that stuff has gone up significantly in the last few years. So we haven't been able to get on that cycle, so.
I guess where I was coming from is if there's a catch-up that needs to happen.
Yeah.
Maybe that should be in its own line.
And I don't think we, at this point in the game, I don't think we have to. We're not like we were in twenty-seventeen where we were behind a lot of sets and we, we made that big purchase. That's why I budgeted for the three sets now, to try to keep us on a cycle, so we don't have to come back for the big purchase again.
Okay.
Diesel fuel, as we all know, sitting here, right? So that, we had nine thousand in the budget. I'm pretty sure after this week's invoice, it's going to be coming over. It's done. I've already depleted it for this year.
Well, you've been doing all that driver training with a new truck.
Which I have to do, right?
Yeah. Is that, is that going to suffice, the diesel number?
Uh, proposed thirteen, yeah, so last year.
Calls more than last year.
Yeah, last year, from December, uh, from January first to December thirty-first, for the course of the year, we spent twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars, I believe, in diesel fuel. So I budgeted for thirteen in hopes that obviously, yes, we have a bunch of driver training we're doing with the new truck, but I don't see a significant increase by adding a truck to the fleet, because that truck's going to be responding to calls. You're taking the workload off the other trucks, so I think it'll be balanced out. I think it'll be more in line where we should be. Obviously, I can't control the price of gas and diesel, so I'll know better next year. Contracted services, that's like all our reporting softwares, all our stuff like that, our hose testing and ladder testing comes out of there. Obviously, I have an increase in hose testing this year because of buying new hose for the new truck. There's an increased cost there that we're going to have to incur, obviously. And then the other one that went up was medical supplies. The cost of medical supplies are just increasing. So I'm hoping that the ten thousand will be enough. It was only up from eight thousand.
Yeah, see, that's not, you know, that's, that's.
So those, that's, those are the only things, all necessary stuff based on the data I had in front of me.
You know, the boy will have to consider it, but in general, a twelve and a half percent increase, I'm just trying to get my head around that.
Yeah, the two fifties.
That's a lot to ask the taxpayers to fund. And, and what I'd love to do is have some understanding of what the options are around that. Is it, is it all, the way it's presented, it's a package deal. And I, I suspect there are some things in there that probably are not as high a priority as your salaries. I'll call them secondary. And what are those things? And how much are they? And, or are you saying everything in here is absolutely first priority?
Are you budgeting to bare bones, other than the salaries? Do you think that this is what you've got to have?
This is my first time sitting in front of the budget, so.
What, what, I think what Tom's trying to say is.
Last year, I got last year's numbers here and I mean, yeah, there was money that I guess that wasn't spent per se, but I.
How much was that?
According to this spreadsheet, thir- thirty-seven thousand, but I don't.
Thought it was more than that.
Yeah, so I'm, like, the fire equipment, and maybe we could just sit down and go through some of the lines. Like the fire equipment, when I look at it, you've got like sixty-three hundred left. So maybe we just go through and see what you have planned to buy with some of these lines, you know, I mean, with the extra amount, the dry hydrants. We haven't spent any of the four thousand.
Yep, the projects are on hold until spring.
Okay, and that's fine, just, just an explanation.
The, the thing is, well, I think what we're trying, what we're going to try to get to here is, okay, you, your priority is getting the two fifty for the salaries, get up to where you think they need to be. To, to not do a twelve percent increase, is there anywheres down the line where there's stuff that it may not have to be spent? Now, if it has to be, it has to be. Okay, but you're gonna, you're just gonna have to explain that and tell me.
And I think what you're talking about here is you may have some lines that are overstated. If you can drop those down, it drops the twelve percent. Because if, if you don't need to ask for it, don't, and that will lower.
I totally agree.
We've done the same thing with other departments, Wayne.
No, 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 I totally get that part.
We've got a department there that came in and they had a, a six thousand dollar line that hadn't been spent out. Why are you asking for another six thousand if you ain't spending it out? So by doing that, it, it's, a lot of this, and I tell everybody this, because I've done budgeting for many years, a lot of it's eye candy. What you see on the paper, okay, make the numbers look right, but you've got to be able to explain why they're right.
Correct.
Okay, if you have numbers of, you know, thirty-some thousand dollars that ain't spent, but you're asking for more, you don't ask, you don't ask for money you can't spend.
I would agree.
So tidy this up, put your priorities, obviously, salaries. We know that's the fact of the case, right? We know that you need this much for fuel. We know you need this much for equipment, this and that. Just make sure everything's tidied up first.
And he could, like, if I look at the employee training line, it only has seventeen hundred spent out of it. And if we look at what the next few months are going to bring, he could come do and ask for permission to maybe buy one of those sets that he needs out of this year's.
How much is that budget?
Um, ten thousand, there's eighty-two hundred left.
There you go.
And I don't know, we'd have to sit down and talk about what the next few months.
And those numbers, right, so here's an example, I'll give you an example. We haven't sent, I'm not sending anybody to paramedic school this year, so that ten thousand is going to.
Perfect.
Paramedic school is, I got the notes in my office, upwards of free and fifteen thousand dollars, right? So how do I, how do I cut that now and anticipating?
Maybe you don't cut it.
No, I know.
Maybe, maybe you buy a suit out of that line this year.
Suit line.
And so you can go to two suits next year. I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Let's sit down and look at it.
What, what your job is right now is to make it so it's not a twelve percent increase.
Yeah.
What, what your job is right now is to make it so it's not 12% increase, to make it, to confine that, to wear bare bones, where you know your priority is salaries.
Safety.
Safety. You, you're regulated, we know you have to have certain suits, certain hoses, you regulate to that, and you know you're increasing your, your fuel. And then after that, it is what it is.
Sure.
Maybe you can...
Right?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. We just don't wanna see any lines that got 10, $12,000 that we're not spending. Not with a 12% increase.
The only other thing I would say, if there are things in there that you wanna do that will help with retention, personally, I would, I would try to find a way, whether it's training or whatever, I wouldn't, I would try to support that.
The pay is what's gonna keep people here, unfortunately.
Okay, that, that's fine, I'm just saying if there are other things that...
We've sent people to training, I mean, look, we have some other full-time employees that we've sent to significant training.
We're like a stepping stone here, you know, we've, we've talked about it for years.
Do they ever step here rather than stepping away? They must.
Some, some do, yeah, sure, sure, until, right, until we get them here, we train them, and then they go somewhere.
Honestly, Wayne, the problem you're gonna have here, we can't solve this problem unless we just throw money at a wall. Okay, because these guys, especially the per diems, okay, the per diems work in multiple houses. They know what the pay is here, the pay is there, they're gonna jump around. What we gotta do is, we gotta be competitive. We can't be capable as Beth and those guys, where they're paying 30, 40 dollars an hour. But we gotta be competitive, and that's what we're gonna try to do here. But make your priority, obviously, salary, and then figure out what you can do.
It's money that... We got this. Let's sit down next week, Wayne, and look at some of the lines. I got some ideas that can help you with.
Um, I, I don't know if we can do this, but, um, one way of approaching it is, is give him a target that he can work towards.
I, I think I just did.
What was that?
Give bare bones what you absolutely need.
All right.
Okay, I'm not gonna give him a target.
Okay, see where that comes up.
He's a department head, I feel all the department...
Did you want more like a number, like a...
No, you just gave him clear instructions.
I wouldn't know how to pick it, and I'd rather you go through your process, David described first, we'll look at the number, see if it's something that can...
I'd rather be at a 9% increase where inflation would be than a 12.
Actually, that was the number I had in my head, but, you know, it was like 8 or 9%. If you can get it in that range, even all you're trying to do, um, the salary increases alone, um, I think that was a, on average, a, a 10 to 12% increase, that 250, over your three line. So, you know, that's a, that's a nice increase, they deserve it, because the market's there, but, um, yeah.
Do what you can, that's all you're gonna want me to do.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne. Thank you for bringing this in. So, wanna take a minute and talk about next steps?
Yes. Um, so we, um, Kelly and I have been working on lists of special projects, because we're gonna need those capital numbers as we start thinking about putting the warrant together and where this budget stands. So, hoping that you guys are thinking about anything, if you have it, in regards to, you know, putting money aside into a bridge account or putting any money you wanna put aside anywhere. Maybe you don't wanna put any, and that's fine, but Kelly's maintaining a special projects list that, um...
Could we at our, now, maybe you folks know this, I, I'd love to see a list of our reserves.
Okay.
And let's go through them and understand what we have set aside, and whether or not those things, sometimes those reserves get set aside and, you know, they were five years ago, and maybe they make sense, maybe they don't.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we put money aside for the West Shore Drive out of the, um, ARPER funds.
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe we put any aside for the Hopper, which I don't, at this point in time, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't have any special projects. I don't wanna touch this building until we get our evaluation done. Um, we're not gonna do anything in the parking lot until that's done.
I thought there were other reserves where, where it happens to have surplus and it gets sent to a reserve.
Well, they do, you've got...
And so those things can be, you know, they can...
Get a balance on the Article 43 and see if it's time to...
That's when it's, all of those reserve accounts.
We've got Article 43, which is, um, that's something we should look into. I don't know where it is, I have no idea.
It dwindled down little by little, but we only got like two roads as, as sponge outfits, so...
I, I'll take a look at it. So the, the reserves in the Article 43, sorry, I'll put that on, we'll put it on a regular selectmen's agenda.
And, and just for my, our information, could you calculate, um, I guess based on 21, because we don't have 22 yet, what are, what are policy reserve thresholds should be for the town and for the school?
The what?
We have policies on, uh, undesigned reserve thresholds. And I believe the town doubles up on the school, or at least the way it's calculated, which I, I don't think we, we should do that. I mean, they are two separate enemies, and, in other words, we take the budget for the town and include the school, and calculate a reserve on that, and then the school calculates a reserve on its budget, and it seems to me we're doubling up.
So we're looking for the target balances. When the policy was written, it was, the examples in the policy are, uh, 18, 2018, the calendar year, so...
Okay, well, you can just update it for 21, and that'd be close enough.
Three to four months or something like that, like 1.2 million.
Right, yeah.
Which, you know, we probably ought to increase that number, obviously, from 2018.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if we calculate it based on the 21 budget, that will get us reasonably close, yeah.
I mean, if we're going with the budget now, that we do have the 22 budgeted amount, we could use that number.
Do it on the 22 budget, yeah, that would be good.
So we have that, um, what else? So we need to figure out, um, if you take these initial worksheets home, Kelly worked, um, hard on filling in the numbers and making the changes. The only change that's not on there that we didn't do was move the transfer station insurance, so she's working on that.
Great.
But we filled in...
Move and get back into transfer station, yeah.
But we filled in all of the other ones, the increases on the insur- on the, um, insurances, electricity and everything, so we need you to take a look at that and see how those numbers look to you. Um, and then what was the other thing? That was about it, municipal management? You wanna put another budget meeting together next week?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we'll meet with the rec. Do you have any, um, do you have any intention of meeting with any of the social services?
I'm also...
I didn't see any significant increases in there. In other words, some of them were flat, were they not?
There was one, there was one...
I thought the bigger ones, like, um, ASYCC, wasn't it flat?
Uh, was it still 22? Was that the 22,000?
Well, whatever. If, if, if there's, for me, if there are any with a large increase, then I'd wanna, I'd wanna talk with them.
We just had one that was large. It was, um, Acton Wakefield. It went from 11,000 to 20,000.
Oh, I, I...
In the library, it went from 26 to 30.
Did they have something to explain that increase?
I'll look through the...
Let's see what their documentation is.
I read it, but I don't remember.
Maybe you could send that to us, we could look at it and then decide whether we wanna bring them in or not.
And the library, she was saying, had about a $5,000 increase. Uh, that was primarily for some equipment.
Yes, and bookshelves.
Bookshelves. So that would be a one-time, we expect it to go down?
At the library.
Library, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll send you those two. We'll send you anything else that jumps out.
Great.
Those are the, I think those are the only two.
So are we hoping that, uh, by this time next week, so Kelly and I know that next, uh, that tomorrow, we're gonna work on getting Warren and finance their roads and the fire, which may be difficult with, since those two are kinda pending in front of you now? I mean, we give Warren, you know, those are the two departments who've kinda said, go back and do A, B, and C, so those were the two we wanted to send over to him tomorrow.
Well, um, what's in the shape? Is the municipal in a shape to share with them?
Um, according to their schedule, they're only due to meet with the fire and rescue.
Well...
And roads on Monday.
Oh, you know what? Uh, send them.
Send them, as they've currently proposed, yeah.
Yeah, um, and let the finance committee do their thing.
Yeah, so we'll send them, propose.
All right.
Okay.
That work for you?
I'll talk to their members and present to what I heard today.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if anything, it sounds like they may go down some, if anything, so...
Well, the whole point of sending them is so the rest of their committee can do the same thing we just did.
That's right.
And, um, justify it.
Okay. Great. Thanks, everyone. Uh, I think we're adjourned.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm being emotional, this is just...
No, I don't think this...